I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three is approval of minutes from June 7, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jim. Any changes, errors, or omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain from it.
One abstention. Mr. Nouse, thank you. Motion passes. The next is entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Solo, second. Seconded by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next is my honor to call former deputy selectman, Mr. Flood, to the podium.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, Brian.
You too.
And it is, as I said, my honor and my pleasure. On behalf of the entire Board of Selectmen, we have a very special person with us here tonight, Mr. Brian Flood. And I understand you're, again, a new father, so it's a double reason to be here. Not only to thank you for your years of service and attention, but also to congratulate you and your wife and whole family.
Thank you very much.
You're your new baby boy.
Very appreciated.
And I'm going to read a certificate of appreciation. May it be known that this certificate of appreciation is presented by the Portland Board of Selectmen on behalf of the townspeople, the entire town of Portland, to honor Brian M. Flood for your outstanding time, effort, and work you have accomplished as a member of the Board of Selectmen. Having served six terms, beginning by being elected, Brian, in 2005, and again in 2007, and again in 2009, again in 2011, again in 2013, and again in 2015. Selectman Flood continued on the Board of Selectmen until his recent resignation on April 6, 2017. The town of Portland has greatly benefited, and we have progressed to our present status because of you, Selectman Flood, and your generous work, your volunteering, and your leadership. Now therefore, let it be known that I, Susan Bransfield, as first selectwoman of the town of Portland, on behalf of all our fellow selectmen and the townspeople of Portland, we hereby extend our sincere thanks, our missing of you, and our appreciation to Brian Flood, presented the 21st day of June 2017 by Kitch Sernicki, Fred Nouse, Michael Pelton, Kathleen Richards, Benjamin Serb, Jim Tripp, and myself, Susan Bransfield. Congratulations.
Thank you, Susan.
Congratulations.
Sure. Thank you very much, everyone. I have, I would tell you that this is my first certificate of appreciation. I don't think I've ever come close to receiving a certificate of appreciation before. It's obviously, it's been a pleasure over the years, as we all know, I think everyone in this room, that this can be a somewhat trying, and there are many long nights with endless repetition, it seems like sometimes, but it's also been a very rewarding and enriching experience, certainly. And I get off the board, and I have a new baby, see? So the rest of you should stay on the board. I know some of you are thinking about getting off the board. But sincerely, though, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
We have a special gift for you, for your death.
Oh, great. Oh, thank you. People will know who I am now. There we go.
We hope you come back and serve again.
Of course. Someday, someday, I think that could happen.
And I think each selectman would like to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, chair.
Should have had twins.
What Susan failed to mention.
Twins.
When you come back, when you come back, Brian, you need to bring your plaque.
Right.
We don't want to buy it alone.
We can't.
I could bring my old one.
I could bring the baby in the carrier.
Cash and baby.
It is, yeah. Yeah. I don't know about 30 seconds.
30 seconds is a reach.
We'll move on to a couple of other things that I wanted to notify the selectmen about. The second is that this next, not tomorrow, but a week from tomorrow, on the 29th of June, I invite everyone to Portland High School. We're going to have, our state representative, Carpino, and our state senator, Lenaris, will be there, and they will be presenting the Connecticut Veterans War Time Service Medal. And this is for Connecticut service members and veterans. And it was, as I said, it'd be at Portland High School, starting at 3:00 till about 6:00 p.m. And please attend. We'd love to have all of you there. And I thank Representative Carpino's office for coordinating this for us here in Portland. The third thing I wanted to point out is some of the news about the state in terms of budget information. We have determined that there is no state budget that's been passed. I don't think that's any news to any of us. And what we are going to be doing is putting into the bills that will be going out at the end of June to all of our taxpayers. And it will read, "As of June 19," which is when we prepared the statement, "2017, the state of Connecticut has not passed an operating budget for fiscal year July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. The enclosed tax bill is based on the town of Portland's budget adopted on May 8, which made assumptions about state aid. In addition, the motor vehicle tax is being billed at the cap of 32 mils, as required by the existing state law. This cap may be changed or eliminated in the final state budget. We don't know. Therefore, there is a possibility that it may be necessary to send out an additional tax bill in the future. This decision as to whether anything is done in the future will be made by this Board of Selectmen after the state budget is adopted. Thank you for your understanding." The thing I wanted to point out, which, again, I think most of you know it, but under current law, the car tax cap is scheduled to be reduced from the current cap of 37 mils to 32 mils for the assessment year beginning October 1, 16. However, legislation to adjust the car tax cap or to keep it at the 37 mils as it is for this fiscal year, we expect will be considered in special session. But due to the uncertainty, towns which have mil rates higher than 32 mils, ours is 32.98, are, some towns are delaying the issuance of their bills until the budget is passed. Portland will be issuing the tax bills as we are required to do by law. We are not asking for any dispensation or any reason to not. It's important that we have the cash flow for the bills that go out. We base our budget very close to our revenues. There's not cushion, so to speak. It's what we believe we need to run the town. So I wanted to let the selectmen know this, and also the people watching tonight's meeting, because it's very important that you be kept up to date. Are there any questions? Stay tuned. Public comment? No public comment? Any appointments to boards or commissions tonight? There are no refund of excess payments. I think we do have a short committee update on the sidewalk committee. I asked Michael, I know Rick is here, and also Fred, and I attended last night's meeting, and maybe as a group you could comment. And Mike Egalotti is here as a committee member as well. Want to start us off?
Do I go first?
Yeah, why don't you go? Also, we were talking about the clarification on the bonding allocation was the issue. So why don't you pick it up?
Sure. So one of the questions we had during the meeting yesterday was the bonding question, from understanding, included a million dollars for sidewalks, two and a half million dollars for the street project, another half million dollars for things, and then the park. So our feeling in the meeting last night was we would like to use all 1 million dollars of that toward it. And we need to clarify with our attorney as to whether or not that's the case. But our feeling on the committee last night, I think, can be summarized by, you know, we could use every one of those dollars. There's a lot of work to be done in the sidewalks. We narrowed down, I think, to four streets, plus a couple other connecting areas that we could improve significantly. Rick and the rest of the committee have done a fantastic job looking at in detail what areas really need to be done, the high traffic areas in Main Street, have within the half mile of schools, et cetera. We also discussed another project in terms of funding sidewalk repairs and replacement outside the half mile area, which includes some kind of split with the town and with the homeowners there as well. So we're looking at a couple of different areas. We're trying to make this comprehensive for the town of Portland. I know we haven't really done much with sidewalks in a long, long time, and we will be doing some changes to the ordinance, as well as redoing language to accommodate what we've been talking about at the committee. But overall, I think it's gone quite well. Rick has given us a deadline, I believe, of August 1, to really kind of finalize the streets we want to work on, and the scope and detail of projects that we want to get involved with. So that looks like it's going well. I think we have two more meetings to go for that to happen. But I feel comfortable that we'll get that done, and looking forward to getting that done for the people of Portland. Fred?
Yeah, I, thanks, Mike. I think we also are looking at trying to clarify the issue of Spring Street and the sidewalks. Whereas the allocation for the bond on Spring Street, it was, at least my understanding, or I felt that the project, the money for the project for the sidewalks would come out of Spring Street. And so that, I think it's something that we have to clarify.
We, I did speak with finance today, and we are getting a response from Bruce Chudwick, so we should have something very shortly.
So we'll have a legal opinion on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
He guides us on all our bond questions.
And the other part of it, the other question was, I think, on the completion of the road, Spring Street Road, between East Main Street and Main Street, whether we would also include work on the water and sewer infrastructure, or whether we would just do the rest of the project by paving over, milling, and paving the road, but not, but not doing the infrastructure for the water and sewer line. I think that the thinking, and maybe Rick, or you might want to comment, Susan, but the thinking is that that section of the road has not been a problem. There haven't been the problems, leaks, water leaks, et cetera, that we've had on the rest of Spring Street. So the thought was that perhaps we don't need to do that and can reallocate that money for other projects. That was the other question. So I'll let Susan comment, because you might have--
Yeah, I had asked that we get the whole road done in terms of underneath as well as on top. We're going to be opening up the road anyway, and it seems prudent to take a look at doing the entire road as opposed to piecemealing things. That's my opinion. It's up to this board, certainly, as to how we proceed. The pipes underneath, the lower part, are about 100 years old, so we don't very often open up roads and replace pipes. So it seems prudent to do the entire Spring Street. Particularly when we make these changes, there are differentials among the pipes, and the way a new pipe is going to operate is going to be different from one that is maybe tuberculated or has some other difficulties within it. So I would urge the board to think about this and realize we don't do this very often, and it could be very prudent to do the entire project. New road, new infrastructure, as well as new sidewalks. So Spring Street would be done, and that connects to High Street, which, as you know, the pipes were done, the water pipes were done about five years ago.
Oh.
Yep. So I think we need to give that some more consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Rick, did you want to add anything to the committee?
Yeah, I maybe just a little bit of clarification on that and maybe the sidewalks. And I think it certainly is good long-range planning to do an entire street complete. The intent originally of the town engineer, myself, and the water supervisor was to open up, that's the term, that's a misnomer a little bit. So we had planned to open up, totally reconstruct the upper portion of Spring Street, primarily because we have an asbestos water main on it that continues to break, and the road is misshapen, and many other things. And I hadn't originally even contemplated doing anything on the lower part, because it's generally, if you look, that there's great differences in the road itself, forgetting the underground utilities in the lower portion and the upper portion. If you go down the lower portion, it's got a nice crown, it's pretty straight, it's got decent drainage. So we really hadn't contemplated doing anything. When we got into it, I kind of said, you know, I'd like to have this street complete look the same. So we could do that very easily without opening up the road at all. We would simply mill. So you'd mill the pavement that exists down, not get into the subbase or anything else, and you'd, just similar to what we did, for example, in the parking spaces on Main Street. We milled it out, we repaved it, we recurved it, and we put sidewalks. And the cost of that was, the cost to reconstruct and replace water and sewer mains is a whole order of magnitude more. So certainly, the upper portion should be reconstructed, the utilities should be all replaced, because they're different types, and they're bad, they're prone to breaking. Lower portion is a little bit of a different story, and the road itself is a different story. So I hadn't contemplated originally even doing anything. And then I said, geez, you know, it would be nice to have everything look good. So the additional cost to do the lower portion is probably, probably a million bucks more when you get into it. And I just assumed that there were other roads that maybe we'd be best to put a million bucks into. But it certainly is very good long-range plan, and to do a road complete, the infrastructure is old, like Susan says, it's just different type of infrastructure. It's not asbestos, it's ductile iron. For example, the water main, the original water main that runs from the reservoir to downtown is put in in 1895, and knock on wood, and I will shoot myself, it hasn't broken, and it's different material. It's a cast iron pipe, and it's good, and it's durable. Asbestos is, as we know, not good. So again, it's just a couple of options for you there, and I'm not sure there's a right or wrong answer to it. It's just, you know, are there, are there other places you'd, maybe the money should be spent? For example, we had three water main breaks on Brownstone Avenue in the last month, asbestos pipe. You know, just food for thought, that's all. Sidewalks, all I'd say is, is great, I think we're, we have a great, you have a great committee. I think we're making very good progress. And I think the question, as Fred posed it, was you have a million dollars on sidewalks, and if you spend it, if you put it into Spring Street, you still get your million dollars' worth of sidewalks. It's about $250,000 worth of sidewalk work on Spring Street. The other night, we pretty well pinned down Freestone, which, just for your information, and what we looked at, to see if you're somewhat in sync, is we looked at Freestone as a good example of a road, and what we decided and pretty much agreed on, I think generally, was that we would replace both sides of the sidewalk, and in all cases, really, whether it's Waverly, whether it's Fairview, or Spring, we think that both sides of the sidewalk should be done between Main and East Main. And then what we looked at on Fairview, for example, and I think Bennett started the thought process of going to one sidewalk on, so Freestone would be both sides up to East Main, and then we would abandon, we would remove the sidewalk on the north side. That's there, it's in very bad condition. And we would put a new sidewalk in continuous all the way from on the south side, all the way and wrap it around the corner, fill in Daniel's block, and you'd have a nice, a real nice sidewalk. And the cost of that, just to give you some, we'd be able to save about 1,500 feet of good sidewalk, would be this library by the church, there's some good sidewalk by the bank. So I took a good look at where it was good. Portland Electric is good, you'd leave that. The cost to do that, what we're thinking of, if everybody's in agreement, would be about $250,000. Then I took a look at Waverly. These are the only two roads I looked at in detail. Waverly, for example, again, same thing, would replace both sides all the way from Main to East Main, and then the little stub of Waverly that goes to the east would just go one side. And I think we probably would do a similar, you know, our thought is we would do a similar type of thing on Fairview. Both sides up to East Main, one side, which is primarily what there is now on Fairview. Spring Street would be one side, probably on the upper portion, it would be most likely the south side, and then on the southern portion, it would be the north side. So we're making good progress. So, I mean, if you, if you look at Spring Street, for example, and you look, so Springstone and, Spring Street and Freestone is about $500,000. Would like to get Fairview and Waverly, I think it would be. And what we're trying to do is a nice connection, so you've done something that's substantial, that's noticeable, rather than hop and jump and go here and there. And then there's also concern about if we're, if all went well, the committee's looking at the section of Main Street from, on this side, from the convalescent home back to Fairview Street, because it's pretty bad. So there's good progress. The key here is to take this from the decision that you guys make and the subcommittee makes, you know, once you've directed me to what sidewalks you definitely want to do and what side you want to do. From that point, it's probably at least a six-month process to survey, get, look at trees, look at all the things, get a bid, set of bid documents in place, and your best cost is going to be, if I can bid that job out, end of January 1 to February, you're going to get your best prices. So it would be, it'd be a very good thing if we can get to that point by, say, August 1. And it would be great if, you know, I don't think without, if the $250,000 for Spring comes out of the sidewalk portion, probably can't do everything we talked about. If the $250,000 could be in the road construction portion of Spring Street, and a million dollars comes beyond Spring Street, then I think we can do everything, and maybe a little bit of Main Street. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mike, did you want to add anything?
As a long range, we also discussed coming to the board with a plan. Like Rick said, we're working real well together, we're staying in an area, trying to enhance those neighborhoods, and so everything's getting done at once. But the biggest concern in the committee is Main Street, all the way up, which is 1.3 million dollars, so we can't do everything. So we're going to try to put together as a committee, you know, there's a current plan in place now to do the town property. This one we're doing now as a group, and then probably another phase, which is smaller, up by Gillicie School, Bartlett Street, Victoria. It's not a lot of money. And then something with Main Street. It's a very big project, which we had to find funding somehow. So hopefully the committee agrees to come forward. So you, the board, have a plan in front of you so you can make the correct decisions.
Any questions from the other board members?
Just one quick thing. I think the other, the other issue is that there was discussion about the timetable, and I think it's our, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was our thought that the timetable would be to bring something before the board at an August meeting. Is that, is that what we agreed on?
Yes.
So that--
Yes, I think the committee would be ready. It's a very well-run committee, and I thank Rick and other members of our staff, as well as all the members. They're doing really a good job. And I think the idea of we've got a project, we're getting certain parameters and ways of doing it, and the next plan is really what we do need to do, Mike, as you pointed out. Get on the right road.
I think the only thing I'd add is, like, Fairview Street, for example, from the town hall to High, that's one side, right? That would be a road where I would say, let's just keep it on that one side. Every side we eliminate, there's one more road we could probably do. Everybody needs to keep that in mind. And I think it's more important to have this outreach for walkability go further, especially if we're taking on future liability. This is the time, the, once you do both sides, we're on the hook for both sides for a long time. We eliminate a side now, we improve all of these roads, we can connect them, we might be able to do a portion of East Main if we don't do both sides of Fairview, you know, to, but these are the things that everybody's got to put a lot of thought into, and, you know. So just wanted to point that out.
Point.
Thank you. And I do love the whole connecting all the way to Cumberland Farm thing. I think that's, because a lot of people--
I don't--
It's high, and if we can also spend a little bit of money on that one spot brick at the bottom of High, where there's a guard rail--
That's a drainage structure. That's--
Right.
Need the town forces to deal with that.
Yeah.
Not easily, but that's--
I agree.
That's irrelevant. That's not--
Right. No, that, in my head, that was, that was another, you know, Daniels, no sidewalk thing, that just, people have to walk out into the street to get around it. I think that's one of the things we should probably work on in the future.
Okay, anything else? I think we'll move on to public comment. William, you have anything? It's nice to see everybody tonight. Thank you. Informal discussion?
Just, I just have one quick thing--
Sure.
--that doesn't have to be discussed tonight, but there has been some discussion with the bridge. A lot of work is going to go on with the bridge. There is work now and in the future. But the issue of security on the bridge and screening, has that, is that something that's come up from, it's come up from other sources in Middletown, but have we done anything in discussing our thoughts on that, and--
Actually, there, when there was a very serious incident on the bridge a couple of years ago, we did meet, we, being the mayor of Middletown, and myself, met with Commissioner Reddicker, DOT, and at that time, he was not committing to any changes on the bridge, and had made the point that, as we're talking here tonight, expenditures are very difficult to meet in terms of the resources. We don't have enough money. So I have not spoken to him since the more recent incident. I think that the mayor has spoken. There's also not only been physical--
Good evening, Lord. I'll be closing in five minutes. If you have any materials to check out, that will be the time. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Not just perhaps physical changes to the bridge, but also the use of, effective use of cameras may also be something that will be looked into. So I have not recently met with anyone, other than what I've read in the papers and the meeting we had a couple of years ago, Fred.
Yeah, perhaps we can at a future point have a discussion about that, and I'm curious how the rest of the board feels, too.
Sure. You can put that on a future agenda.
And if I, I'll give my two cents. I think in that situation where people jump off the bridge, it's typically, or a lot of the times, a mental health issue. We can try to put up barriers and try to do things that are going to deter them, and maybe they'll climb up in a different way, or drive a car, or whatever. At the end of the day, that's not dealing with the mental health issue. We can pretend to put these little barriers here and there, and people that are not determined are going to get around them. So I think that doesn't solve the problem, so I personally don't think that is the answer. I do believe Connecticut has dropped the ball on mental health issues. At least for the majority of my life, we've seen all of these state facilities closed. So the reality is, that's where the state needs to be putting funding, not in additional cages, or, but I don't believe that's the answer.
And the simple physical changes on a bridge are very complicated. I know, as you know, a bridge is designed with certain weight and flexibility, and when you change that, you can or can't do it, and it can present additional problems. They are, they are definitely moving forward. Most likely, it'll be the spring of 2019 when they, the DOT, will pay for the redo of the bridge approaches, both in Middletown and Portland. And that'll include underneath, under in the industrial park, as well as the upper deck. So it'll be the approaches, not the urges. That's already been completed, but the section in Middletown and Portland. And as we did last time, Chamber of Commerce will be working with us on proper implementation of this and safety, also--
Also, we met every month to see how things were going previous, as well as during, and then we will also cooperate with Middletown Police and Portland Police, and I know they did a fine job last time, and I'm sure they will this next time as well. But as I get more information, I'll be happy to share it with you on all those issues.
Do you want to have a question? Yes.
Where do things stand with the development?
What I know so far is that there has been an engineer selected, and he came into the office, I want to say it's now maybe three or four weeks ago, to look at the Anthony Fonda application that was completed and approved, and he is acquiring the, I think it's LRC is the name of the engineering company from Cromwell that did those plans, so he's getting hold of those to review those. There's also been VHB, which is a more local company that will be doing the traffic engineering, and I know Joe Balskus may be working on that. And then Alan Monketrick is going to be doing some of the architectural work for the historic structures at a minimum. And those, all of those folks would be in preparation of the site plan.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. I have nothing on follow-up, so I undertake a motion to go into executive session, purpose of land acquisition. Do we have any guesses?
Unless you say.
It's fine. No, no guess.
Yeah. You're fine with that.
So no guess? Is there a motion to go into executive session? Kitch, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Jim? Thank you, Jim. All in favor?
Aye.